A quorum being present, the first half of our annual town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of Granby?
Yes, it has.
Please rise as Select Board Chairman. Mr. Bale will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For today's town meeting, up front we have the Finance Committee, the Select Board, our Town Administrator, our Town Council, and our Town Clerk. If you are a non-resident or a non-voter, please sit in the area designated for non-voters. If you'd like to comment or ask a question regarding any of the articles as moved tonight, please raise your hand so that I can recognize you. Wait for the microphone to come to you, and then first state your name and address, and then direct your question or comments towards me, and I will direct them to the appropriate The moderator will now recognize Mr. George Randle.
I'm George Randle. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight to town meeting. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for allowing me a few precious minutes. As I indicated, I will be brief. A little over two years ago, a couple of us got together to begin the planning of the events to celebrate the 250th anniversary of Granby's charter. We started meeting monthly, and then it changed to twice a month, and soon, I suspect, we'll be meeting more often until the celebration is completed in 14 months. We have a lot planned for the coming year, and you will not be disappointed. I can assure you that this is no easy task. A lot of work has been done, and there is a lot more to do, and yes, we could use some help. As most of you may know, we had a Ms. Granby Scholarship Contest. This past Saturday night, we held a black tie gala event where Ms. Granby and her court were announced. In alphabetical order, the court is as follows: Brooklyn Baron, Carol Gould, Megan Jolavet, Samantha Judicki, first runner-up, and Lindsey Nobes. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you a young lady who will reign for the next half-century as Ms. Granby, Sidney Codere. On behalf of the 250th Celebration Committee, I extend a sincere thanks to the young ladies who have participated in an important part of our history of Granby. We, the committee, express our congratulations and best wishes. If you know these young ladies and see them around town, please congratulate them and thank them for being a part of your history, our history. We will introduce Ms. Granby and the entire court at the meeting in June. In the rear of the hall, there should be some information, handouts of what the Celebration Committee is planning. Please consider getting involved. There is a lot to do, and many hands will make a big difference to the overall project. Thank you. Again, Sidney. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randle. The moderator will now recognize Mr. Bale.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to publicly thank my friend and fellow Select Board member Lou Berry, who's been on the board with me for the last six years. And, I don't know, he's done a lot of good work, a lot of work that I'm glad I didn't have to do. He's definitely been a pleasure to work with, and he's been an asset for the town, both as a police chief and as a Select Board member. If you see him, please congratulate him on his retirement. I know that he likes to be hugged.
Now on to the annual meeting. The moderator will now recognize Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article One.
And you'll tell me anything? Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to conduct the business of the meeting as follows: On May 8, 2017, consider Articles 2 through 11, and on June 12, 2017, consider Articles 12 through 29.
Thank you. Second? Are there any questions or discussion? This requires a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Two.
Madam Moderator, I move the town hear the reports of town officers and all standing and special committees, and act thereon.
Are there any questions or discussion?
I'll just say that. Typically give a state-of-the-town report, and that'll be done in June, so we'll have a, I don't know, a better idea what's going on.
So this motion requires a majority to pass. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Berry to present the motion under Article Three.
Thank you. Good evening. I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to conduct the following activities for fiscal year 2018: to sell after first giving notice of time and sale and place of sale by posting such notices of sale in some convenient and public place in the town 14 days at least before the sale. Property taken by the town under tax title land of low-value procedure provided the Select Board or whomever they authorize to hold such public auction may reject any bid they deem inadequate. Also, to apply for and accept federal or state grants or monies as may be made available, and to allow the Select Board to expend any funds received or set forth in the appropriate application. Finally, to enter into contract with the Massachusetts Highway Department for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the ensuing year.
Thank you. Second? Any discussion or questions? Over here, please. Can you stand up so? Thank you.
Rich Demorecki, Bachelor Street. Could you tell me how many delinquent real estate taxpayers there are now in Granby? And number two, are there any properties in tax title right now?
I don't know the answer to the first question. Perhaps the tax collector would, but as far as the Treasurer's Office, Mr. Nally's here, he might be able to answer that. As far as the tax delinquent properties, we disposed of everything that we were able to, two years ago, I think, and as the last time I checked, there were none. Again, Mr. Nally would know that.
Madam Moderator, Steve Nally, 31 Pleasant Street, Town Treasurer. Mr. Demorecki, on page 81 in the annual report, we have the balances in foreclosed tax title and the South Halley Fire District. This doesn't give the total number of parcels, but it gives the dollar amounts. In summary, at the end of fiscal year 16, we had $98,134.96 in foreclosed properties, $30,937.06 in tax title, and $20.78 in South Halley Fire District Number Two tax.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Up front here, Mr. Randle.
Thank you. George Randle, 52 Taylor. Part B of this article, "To Apply For and Accept Federal or State Grants and Monies", I would humbly urge the Board of Selectmen to stay on this, and if we are still not applying for any grants, it's imperative that we move forward and start applying. Thank you.
In the back, please.
Abelson, 134 Cold Hill. Do we have any sense of what proportion of the state monies would become available to Granby for our highway maintenance?
So in order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion under Article Three passes unanimously. The moderator will now call for a motion to recess the annual town meeting and call to order the special town meeting. Anybody? Motion? Anybody? Thank you. Can I have a second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. A quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby? The moderator will now recognize, I believe, Mr. -- Steve Nally, to present the motion under Article One.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, Steve Nally, 31 Pleasant Street. I'm also the Town Treasurer. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $54,702 for the purpose of funding the costs of bond council printing and issuance costs for the East Middle School project.
Thank you. Second? Are there any questions or discussion? Do you have some?
Madam Moderator, this is the balance of the total issuance cost for the $13.5 million bond issue we did in February for the construction of the East Middle School project.
Thank you. Further discussion? So the motion under Article One must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Two.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $178,113.50 for the purpose of funding the school lunch deficit as of June 30, 2016.
Second? Is there any discussion, questions?
So, actually, you guys are pretty hard car town meeting people. So you, many of you were here last time when we talked about this back in the spring. Just to give you some background on this article, our school committee and our superintendent are completely new since these debts were incurred. What happened, we, due to administrative problems, they were not prepared to pay the lunch, there was a lunch shortage, I guess, in money. Prior to, about seven years ago, what happened was that the town, the elderly used to come here to have their lunch, and the town would share the expense with the schools. After that, the superintendent at the time decided to also privatize the lunch program here, which in an effort to save money. And we also moved the elderly up to the council on aging where we're serving them food. So there's been a shortage. Unfortunately, we have not had in place people in the school, up until now, we haven't had people in place to actually address this issue, the ongoing deficit. At this point in time, I think it's fair to say that we do have those people. We do have those people, and I think that we will be addressing that. We have some ideas on the town side for what might be done, and I know they're working on it. Oh, sorry, one more thing. And if we don't decide to pay for this now, the state will take it off of our, what's called the tax recap. So basically, if we vote it down, the state's just going to take it out of our taxes anyway.
Thank you. Question over here in the bleachers?
This is John Matthew, 288 Taylor Street. Couple of questions. We did vote on this, I think, a couple of meetings ago, and it was rejected, so I don't understand why it's up again. And the other thing is, why have it here if the state's going to take it anyway? But the first question I'd appreciate.
Do you want to answer the second question? Or you want the first?
I'll answer the first one. Actually, do you want to have John do it? He was on the phone.
Sure. All right.
Hi. I'm John Libero for the Finance Committee. Actually, at the last meeting, I think the Finance Committee, at the last special town meeting, the Finance Committee asked that this article be postponed until this meeting, and we asked so that the school would have time to think about whether or not they could fund it from their budget for this year. They have not given any indication that they have the ability or an interest in funding it, so it's back at the town meeting. It's a little more complicated than the fact that they'll, the state will take it. They will. But the complication is that if they take it and pull it off the tax base, then we could potentially have a problem after the annual meeting, all the tax money is allocated. Chris will have a mess trying to figure out if we will be able to do that without having some kind of other meeting to unwrap it again. So the end result is that, if we're not going to get paid, it's much, much better we vote yes to pay this now out of the way the motion is presented, rather than to let it work through the state. So I recommend that you vote for this.
Also on the bleachers, right behind you.
Hi. Deb Matthew, 288 Taylor Street. The accountability issue, and I know you're going back and putting it on the older people, you're putting it on the old school administrations, but the fact is, it's here. If you cut three teachers, four teachers, that would solve the problem, wouldn't it? If you figure they have a $60,000 a year salary, that would take care of it. I know everybody talks about, we're going to, you know, the state needs to, we don't want the state to do it, we need to take it, but paying for somebody's accountability through our taxes shouldn't be the way to go. And I know it's not a new issue. I know it's an old issue. And we do hope that they're working on solving it now, but coming back to paying an old bill, somebody's got to be accountable. So, shouldn't be the taxpayers, please.
Thank you. In the middle here, right here.
Joe Farnia, 154 Taylor Street. Two quick questions. Number one, what is the annual deficit we're running? And number two, can we sort of go back to a quasi-employee-volunteer system as opposed to privatization? Because it seems that privatization, along with splitting up the senior program from the school program, has been a major contributor to this deficit.
The deficit itself has fluctuated. I think it's been as low as $7,000 and as high as $19,000. Does that sound right, Chris? Yeah. We're averaging about 15,000 a year, which is what the town used to cover many years ago. 15, yep. And I really can't answer the ques-- it's really kind of a school committee question in terms of hiring people. It wasn't really volunteer, they were paying people. So I, we have volunteers, I think, in the school, but not for serving lunch, so I don't
So one quick follow-up question. Are we running a deficit because we don't have enough students buying lunch? Are we running a deficit because we have a minimum contract that we have to guarantee?
The deficit has been around for the last 10 years or so. I appreciate your suggestion, but cutting four teachers will lead to more students leaving our school district. More, fewer students will lead to the problems, the same problems that we're discussing right now. Other than that, the amount has already been taken or will be taken out of free cash. This is not an extra tax amount that we'll be incurring. It is a tax amount that is already in free cash that's going to be taken out, and I think we had this conversation last time. The challenge with the school lunch programs for districts like ours is that because of the fluctuations and because of the size, many of the school districts are actually incurring deficits. And that is a problem. What we talked about last time in January was whether or not we are in a position to mitigate that problem and going forward be able to resolve that problem. Right now, the school lunch deficit, and you were at our meetings as we were discussing these, is below the contingency that is in our budget. Therefore, there is nothing that will be coming to the town for this year. So in a very short period of time, the school committee was able to take control of it, talk to Chartwells, find ways to mitigate the problem, and currently, it is under control. We cannot solve problems that are lingering by continuously cutting current school budget, and in fact, I'm not sure that the discussion right now is about cutting the current school budget, which will be the discussion at our next town meeting.
Tell me where.
Oh, sorry. Apologize. Emory Evans, 18 Crescent Street. I'm also the Chair of the School Committee.
Mr. Randle, up front.
George Randle, 52 Taylor. Thank you. I find it very disconcerting that if our books are audited every year, that nobody's picked up on the shortfall every year and said something to somebody. I don't ever want to come back here to a town meeting and have somebody say, well, for the last 10, 10 years, we've been short by $15,000, and now we need 150. Money is tight, folks, and it's going to be even tighter after the school is built and you see your tax bills, and so on and so forth. What I need to be assured of is that there's something in place, that this isn't going to happen in the future, and somebody at our, when our books are audited, somebody has to say something to the Select Board or the school committee, and it has to get back here to town meeting. To me, that's not acceptable, that we have this shortfall.
This is actually, aside from getting the financial report every year, I mean, you don't know every single financial thing that's going on at a town meeting. This is, we're aware of this. This was something that we were talking about with our auditor and talking about when, you know, we would pay it and when we needed to pay it and stuff. So there's no, it's not a bookkeeping error. There's no thing there. It's just a question of when we're going to bring it forward, and the town auditor said, you know, this would be the time to do it, so that's what we're up to.
Do you want me to just speak to what we're doing? Is that what is asked? Are we good?
Mr. Abelson in the back.
Abelson, 134 Cold Hill. If more than one school district is experiencing the same kind of problems, the same kinds of shortfalls related to lunch programs, is there any way that we can join together with other school districts and have strength in numbers to mitigate that shortfall?
Answer a question. Can you answer that?
I don't have a clear answer for that one. All we know is that the Chartwells that we're working with actually is working on several school districts, and one of the school districts where we're sharing the services is East Hampton School District. So there's already some sharing of that administrative cost. The primary driver of the deficit typically is fluctuations in enrollment. You can't really anticipate who's going to be eating when and how much, so we have to stay on top of it, which we have been doing. The last, during this school year, we have a meeting with the Chartwells representative every other month, and they present to us what, where they are and what the latest status is as far as the school program, school lunch program. And by staying on top of it, we were able to bring it down to the levels that the program is in right now.
One more question.
Rich Demorecki, Bachelor Street. I don't usually stick up for the school committee, but I am going to now somewhat. I don't really like how, Mark, you blame the school committee twice for this problem. The Select Board should share some of the responsibility for this lunch issue. At the last meeting we had, the outside auditor talked about the management report that they produce every year. As a matter of fact, he gave me copies of the management letter for the last three or four years. It's only, I believe, three or four pages long, and it's your responsibility to go through that management letter and resolve any issues. Now, the outside auditors mentioned this problem about the school lunch deficits every year, and nothing was done about it. So it's partly your responsibility. There were issues on the town side as well as the school, so it's a shared problem. So this is one issue that they should not be blamed for 100 percent. I think the main thing is, we have to go forward and make sure that deficit is as little as possible in the future. And one way to resolve that is not to fund any future deficits for the school lunch program.
So in order for the motion under Article Two to pass, it must pass by a majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Three.
Okay. Mrs. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $228,415 for the purpose of funding the General Purpose Stabilization Fund.
Thank you. Second? Comments?
Yep. Okay. So, free cash, sounds simple. It's never easily explained, even when we explained it. Basically--
it. Basically, the very simplest way of looking at it is there's the difference between what the budget is planned for the previous year and how much we spend. State advises that we actually get about 3% to 5% of the difference between what we-- 3% to 5% less than what we budget for should be coming back to us in cash and suggests that we put that in stabilization. We have three or four stabilization funds. We don't-- we have them earmarked for certain things, but they could-- the money could be taken out by a two-thirds vote by town meeting. In fact, the biggest difference between free cash and stabilization fund is you need a simple majority to take-- for town meeting, it's a simple majority to take money out and spend it in free cash. Takes a two-thirds majority if it's in a stabilization fund.
We have a question up front. Mr. Emory. I mean, Mr. Everin.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, Emory Everin, 18 Crescent Street. I'd like to move to postpone the discussion on Articles 3, 4, and 5 until our continuation of annual meeting on June 12.
So, Emory, we cannot postpone these next three articles for the annual town meeting because the annual town meeting's warrant has already been published. So in order to postpone it and bring it up again, it would have to be at a special town meeting, which we obviously don't have one.
But we can't postpone.
But we what?
But we can't postpone.
I understand that. But can we have a special town meeting at the continuation of the annual town meeting in June?
Well, that would be up to the select board or if you petition for a special town meeting. Hold on, we're discussing.
Okay.
Where's my... for discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't see you.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. I think that's a terrible idea. I think we should approve the article as proposed. The whole reason you have stabilization funds is to fund capital projects. Every community in Massachusetts relies on free cash to either construct buildings, buy equipment, not to fund current budgets. So I think we should follow the procedure we've always followed. Every year, free cash has been transferred into stabilization funds. If the town decides they want to take some money out of those funds later on, they can do it. It may require a higher vote, but that has been the history of what free cash should be used for.
Emory would like to respond. Come on up.
Is there a motion for 3, 4, and 5? Because I didn't do 4 or 5 yet.
Yes, it was 3, 4, and 5. I can repeat it for the other ones if you want.
Just go ahead. Do your discussion.
Okay. There are a couple of reasons for my motion. One is that we seem to be having discussion around free cash, which is related to our finances in our May meeting, whereas all the financial articles are in the June meeting. Therefore, we are, in a way, depriving the town meeting to have a full picture of our financial picture for the upcoming fiscal year and be able to evaluate whatever funds are available for us in the context of that greater picture. Second, there will be some articles in the June meeting that will be asking for additional funds, one of them being the school budget. From my personal perspective, it makes sense to have all instruments that are legally available to a town to be present at the next town meeting so that the town meeting can make the decision as to whether they would like to use one or a combination of all those three. And what I can quickly think of, one is obviously is the tax override. Number two would be taking money out of stabilization. And number three would be free cash. The last point that I would like to emphasize as far as free cash, as Mr. Bale mentioned, it is how much has been already appropriated, which is taxes that you already paid, minus what's been spent. So that's the surplus, which becomes free cash, gets certified, and comes back to the town. The recommended amount as-- or percentage, as Mr. Bale mentioned, is about 3% or so. We have had, in the last so many years, more than double that percentage. So if we're going to be in a position to ask additional funds from the taxpayers at the next town meeting, I believe it makes sense to keep all three options available to the town since, again, this has already paid taxes instead of going fully after a tax override. Obviously, at any point, the decision lies with the town meeting, but I wanted to move based on these considerations.
All right. One second, please. what you're doing now, or if you ask to withdraw the motion and ask those city people, this deal, no vote precisely because you want to keep the money for cash, we're going to actually have to...
Do you want to do it?
I don't know.
I don't want to explain.
All right, we're back. Questions?
Joe Forni, 154 Taylor Street. I believe that we should also go forward and vote on the stabilization. I believe that if you're going to take money for ongoing operating expenses instead of convincing the townspeople to raise the tax rate because this is an ongoing deficit problem every year until you run out of that cash, I believe there should be a higher burden at the town meeting. I don't think it should be a simple majority. I think two-thirds of the people in town should have to vote that money out of stabilization because this is money that we're putting away for capital needs and other needs in the future. We're talking about funding ongoing operating expenses by taking free cash every year, which is a recipe for disaster. So in five or six years, when we run out of all of this free cash or stabilization funds are relatively depleted, then we're going to be forced to have to raise our taxes again. I think we should be smart. Yes, we've already raised taxes for the capital stuff, which I fully support, but I think the school committee has to make a case, put that before the townspeople, and I think that an ongoing operations should be funded through the tax rate, not through free cash.
Thank you. Any other discussion on postponing? In the back, please. At the bleachers.
Hi, Karen Belanger, 149 East Street. I'm just wondering. I'm looking here and I'm seeing that, you know, $228,415 for Article 3, 4, and 5. Is that the same amount that's covering everything, or is that actually $228,415 times three different withdrawals from free cash?
So, Ms. Belanger, we're actually talking about the motion to postpone indefinitely. That question would go to the actual motion, but if that will help you with your decision to postpone or not, I'll have that answered.
It's just three separate.
Is it the same? Is it the same?
Three separate amounts.
They're three separate amounts. Yes. Mr. Bale?
Albert Bale, 40 North Street. The motion to postpone indefinitely kills this article dead, right?
Yes.
It can't come back.
Right.
It has to come back as a regular thing. So you need to understand, I don't think it's going to be postponed indefinitely, but if you do, it's dead, period. Is it possible for the fairness of the issue to ask for a recess until the next meeting? Could this meeting just stop and recess and start it if that's what the body chooses? That's my question. If we just recessed the meeting, because these are the last three articles, recessed those till the next following meeting, if that's what the body chooses.
Oh, and put them back and put them in a special...
I'm not recommending it. I'm just asking parliamentary procedure.
Just a minute. it up at the next annual town meeting. However, the motion to postpone indefinitely is not amendable, so we have to vote on that first. And Mr. Bale is correct. If the motion to postpone indefinitely is passed by a majority, that will kill Articles 3, 4, and 5, and we will not vote on those articles otherwise at this meeting.
I believe...
Can you wait for the microphone, please?
A point of order. I believe that you have to conduct three separate votes because it's three different articles.
We can either separate them into the three articles as written, or we can, we can, as a meeting, vote on all three together for the motion to postpone. So I will ask town meeting, would you like, when we take our vote, to vote for the motion to postpone on all three articles at once, or would you like to present them one at a time and vote? All those in favor of voting for all three together, please raise your hands. Thank you. So we will be voting for the motion to postpone for all three articles together when the time comes. Are there any other questions on the motion to postpone Articles 3, 4, and 5? Over here, please.
Rich Damaraki. Can we have someone from the finance committee come up and tell us what their opinion is?
I can't hear you.
Can you have someone from the finance committee come up and tell us what their opinion is about postponing this or delaying it? You see refusing?
Hi, I'm John Libero speaking for the finance committee. First of all, I think that at least the issue has been correctly identified. This has nothing to do with free cash. This has all to do with the school budget coming up at the next meeting. And so the finance committee has recommended in its meeting last week, we voted, that this money should be put into free cash. The reason is, is that we put in free cash, and the first thing to keep in mind is that unless we do something with the free cash, it will disappear from the books. Doesn't disappear in reality, but disappears from our books at the end of this fiscal year and will not be available to the town to use for anything until the following fiscal year. Now, I know that, first of all, the school committee would like to vote for this money to be used for extra funds for the school budget for next year, but nevertheless, the point is that unless it's used for something or put into stabilization fund, it disappears. So we're all in favor of putting it in a stabilization fund. And then, as another person from the audience said, at the school, at the meeting when we talk about school budget, if people want to consider taking it out of stabilization fund, okay. But that's not really, we think, the way to do this. There's been a large misunderstanding about free cash in past years and about the town budget. The way the town in Granby has operated for the past quite a few years is that at the annual town meeting, we vote for the total budget for the town for the following year. But every year in the springtime, almost every year in the springtime, we have another special town meeting where we vote additional large sums of money. And you can go back and check the records. And those additional large sums of money that we vote in the springtime come from free cash. So there usually isn't this question of having this big chunk of free cash at the end of the year because the amount of money we need to vote to run the town comes in two separate meetings. This year, that hasn't happened. This year, we have had no town meeting requiring large sums of money to spend on something. And the second thing is that if you look at the budget for the coming fiscal year, we have a very small amount of capital needs in this budget. There's been great constraint shown in the budget because we've got this $805,000 that we have to spend for, to pay back the first loan on the borrowing for the school complex, which is a good thing. But everybody so far has been very restrained in the budget, so we have not had that big push this spring. That's why this money is sitting around. But still, the finance committee would recommend that we put it into... But still, the Finance Committee would recommend that we put it into stabilization funds at this meeting, and then at the town meeting, decide what to do with it. Thank you.
I think the point that Mr. Libero is making is mirroring what I was trying to say, is that right now, there is no financial article to be considered, and therefore, we cannot really take any action to use that free cash for anything other than putting in stabilization. My motion was to be able to create the opportunity for the town meeting, and obviously for, for everybody else, to be able to discuss free cash availability in the context of the greater financial picture. There is, the school committee is not intending to finance its entire request out of free cash or out of stabilization, it will be a combination, if it is, but we just wanted to be able to have that opportunity. And the last thing is, it is true that free cash basically disappears for a little while until it comes back next year, but our continuation of town meeting is in mid-June, it's on June 12th. Therefore, the discussion will occur well before the state's deadline for the free cash to be used for any purpose.
So if there's no more questions or discussions, we will vote on the motion to postpone Articles 3, 4, and 5. Any other questions? So in order for the motion to postpone to pass, it must pass by a majority vote. So all those in favor of postponing Articles 3, 4, and 5, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? So the motion to postpone Articles 3, 4, and 5 does not pass. So now we will go back to voting on the motion as presented by Mr. Bale for Article 3. I will refresh your memory. To move... He gave the motion. Oh. Mr. Bale, would you still like to discuss your motion to recess now?
I wasn't making a motion, I was just suggesting a procedure if you wanted to do that. I wasn't making a motion, sorry.
Oh, okay. Do you have a question on the... A... Just a minute, wait for the microphone.
Yeah, Madam Moderator, since we already voted to do this as a package plan for 3, 4, and 5, when we make this vote now, it's for all three articles, we don't have to revisit them, right?
No. The vote for 3, 4, and 5 was to postpone. Since that failed, we will now go back to the motion under Article 3 and just vote on the motion under Article 3.
So they're going to be individually, they're not going to be...
Individually, yes.
That's what was my question.
So the motion under Article 3 was presented by Mr. Bale. Are there any questions or discussion on the transfer from free cash into the general purpose stabilization fund? Which is Article 3. So in order for the motion under Article 3 to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article 4.
I thought that was 2.
I'm so confused now.
Oh, no, 2 was an opposite.
No, yes.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $228,415 for the purpose of funding, funding the capital needs stabilization fund.
Thank you. Second, any questions or comments? In order for the motion under Article 4 to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article 5.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $228,415 for the purpose of funding the municipal building, construction, renovation, stabilization fund.
Second, any questions or comments? In the back here? Go ahead and stand, I don't think she sees you.
Rich Damaraki. Are we just curious, how much, how much is left in free cash after this article? Is it all transferred out?
$1.42.
Any further questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article 5, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. The moderator will now call for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and call to order the annual town meeting. Can I have a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? So the annual town meeting will now resume with Article 4.
I move the town vote to authorize the various departments to receive compensation for services rendered as printed in the warrant for fiscal 2018.
Second, any discussion or comments? In order for the motion under Article 4 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Berry to present the motion under Article 5.
I move the town vote to authorize the Conservation Commission to charge a fee of $65 for each site inspection deemed necessary by a quorum of the commission. Fees shall be payable to the Town of Granby Conservation Commission and deposited in the Conservation Hatch Fund.
Second, any discussion or questions? In order for Article, the motion under Article 5 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Brooks to present the article, the motion under Article 6.
Hi. Kevin Brooks, 246 State Street, Cemetery Commissioner. I move the town to accept the following gifts in calendar year 2016 for perpetual care of cemetery lots. Lisa M. Mayhew, $775. Maureen McCain, $775. Arthur H. Volbrecht, $1,555. Linda M. Tripp, $775. Jacqueline A. and Edwin J. Lemelin, $1,565. Melissa A. and Gerald A. Archimbo, $1,565.
Can I have a second? Any discussion or questions? Do you have a question? Okay. So in order for the motion under Article 6 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Bale to present the article, the motion under Article 7.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize expenditures from these revolving funds for fiscal year 2018 without further appropriation. A, Parks Oversight Revolving Fund, which the Parks Oversight Ad-Hoc Committee may spend $40,000 in revolving fund monies in fiscal year 2018. B, Charter Day Revolving Fund, from which Charter Day Ad-Hoc Committee may spend $50,000 in revolving fund monies in the fiscal year 2018. C, a Planning Board Fees Revolving Fund, from which the Planning Board may spend $50,000 in revolving fund monies in fiscal year 2018. D, an After-School Activities Program Revolving Fund, from which the Superintendent of Schools may spend $20,000 in revolving fund monies in fiscal year 2018. E, a Dog Revolving Fund, from which the Police Chief may spend $12,358 in revolving fund monies in fiscal year 2018. And F, a Library Revolving Fund, from which the Library Commissioners may spend $2,000 in revolving fund monies in fiscal year 2018.
Second, any discussion? Okay. Mark will go first, and then you will.
Just as a refresher on what a revolving fund is, it's a fund, it's basically supported by user fees. So it doesn't cut, none of the money comes from our tax dollars, and town meeting authorizes a certain amount of spending, there may be actually more money in some of those accounts, but they can't, they can't spend those without coming back to town meeting. So that's what a revolving fund is.
Right next to you.
Rich Damaraki. I had two questions. There's about $175,000 being spent in these revolving funds. Are there any wages or fees being paid to anybody? Or is this for all material items? Because if there are, I'd like to know who's getting paid a wage or a fee.
Rich, the only one that we pay wage out of is the Parks Oversight Committee, because we pay someone to open and close the park for any event that's being held there. So they do get like, I think it's $50 per open and close. That's it.
Okay, and the last question, does anybody ever review the invoices that are paid out of these revolving funds? Is there any oversight at all? Or you just give them the money and they spend it?
No, they have to go through the warrant process, so the town accountant has to review the invoices and make sure it's a legitimate invoice.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? In order for the motion under Article 7 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article 8.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize town departments to enter into agreements in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section 4A, for the fiscal year 2018.
Second, any discussion?
We on occasion enter into agreements with other towns to do particular services or whatever, so this just basically authorizes us to be able to do that if the need arises.
Any further questions? The motion under Article 8 must pass by a majority, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Gay to present the motion under Article 9.
Richard Gay, 175 Kendall Street, a member of the Charter Day Committee. I move the town vote to appropriate a three-year contract with Rockwell Amusements New England Rides for Granby Charter Days for the years 2017, 2018, and 2019, and authorize the select board to sign the contract.
Second, any discussion? Right behind you?
Abelson, 134 Cold Hill. Do we have any liability attached to any, anything in either Article 9 or 10?
Well, we have to...
In Article 9, sorry, Madam Moderator. So if something happens to someone, and Rockwell Amusements insurance is $1 million, and the judgment is for $4 million, who's on the hook?
Now, the company has their own liability insurance that we have a, you know, they send us a copy of it when they come in for the rides.
Thank you. Any other questions? Over here, please.
Joe Fornia, 154 Taylor. Under the contract, are we guaranteeing any minimal amount of money so that if they don't generate revenue X, we have to pay them Y to make up the difference?
Yeah, we're guaranteed for the rides, $6,000 a year, where they give us for a minimum.
And just a quick follow-up?
Wait a second.
Yeah, we don't guarantee anything to them. They, we receive money from them.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So in order for the motion under Article 9 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gay will now present the motion under Article 10.
I move the town vote to appropriate a three-year contract with Poppy's Concessions for Granby Charter Days for the years 2017, 2018, and 2019, and authorize the select board to sign the contract.
Second, are there any questions? Mr. Abelson?
Abelson, 134 Cold Hill. Same question, do they have appropriate liability coverage that we are happy with?
Yes, they do. All the contracts have liability with them. And, and we get money from the contractor, too. We don't pay anything out to them.
In case you were wondering.
Yeah.
Another question?
Rich Damaraki. I'm just curious, do you know how much liability insurance they do have? What the amount is? In either article?
No, I don't know. They're right off the top of our head. When we sign the contract with them, we get all that.
In the back? Ms. Belanger?
Hi, Karen Belanger, 149 East Street. When we're signing that contract, does Poppy's have an exclusive? Or are there other companies that could come in as well? Or Poppy's is, that's what we have, only one choice?
Yeah, he has a contract for all the food for Charter Day. Any other, anybody else that wants to come in has to go through him.
So in order for the motion to pass under Article 10, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. I think that's yours? Okay. The moderator will now call on Mr. Al Bale to present the motion under Article 11.
I move the town... The town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume 2, Chapter 9, 19, Personnel Bylaw, Appendix D, Compensation Plan, Pay Schedules, and Substitute. A new Appendix D showing the nine pay grades and the 10 steps to be effective July 1, 2017.
Second, any questions? Up on the bleachers?
Stan Jacobs, 52 Porter Street. What's the current schedule look like?
I'm sorry, do you say what's the...
The current schedule.
The current schedule look like?
I mean, this is... Isn't this the one to change it? Most schedules have... Let me pull it out for you. The old schedule had 12 grades and 10 steps. Our consultant was... And when he did the evaluation of the neighboring towns, we had six towns in the area and towns our size, and he was concerned that our competition maintained itself at a reasonable level. All right? So, what we did is we... When we looked at the old salary schedule, nobody is in Step 1 and we have a custodian position in Step 2 that is not filled. I'm sorry, the first Step 1 is for seasonal employees. So, what we decided we could do is shift the old... The salary schedule by basically moving Steps 1 and 2 to 3. Now, this is going to get complicated. What... The handout in front of you is the old Step 3, which is now Step 1. All right? That allows us to add two new numbers in Step 9 and 10, which means that our loyal employees who have been given us years of good service were only getting 2% raises while the people who were growing through the salary scales, through the steps, were getting 5%. All right? By adding two steps, what this does is allows us to... Allow the new employee, the old traditional employees, to get two extra steps to increase their pay to maintain our competitive nature. And it allows us to do it without... The total amount of money is 2.1% in dollar amounts. Does that answer your question, sir?
Any further questions? In the back here? Rich, can you stand up?
Thanks. Rich Damaraki, just when it's all said and done, what was the total dollar amount that the town paid for these increases? Just in general, do you know?
Can you say a little louder in the mic?
After you got done with these step increases in adjusting salaries, what was the total amount that the town had... Additional amount that the town incurred for wages? Just roughly.
The difference is about $1,843.46. $11,000, I'm sorry.
Wait, where's it say that?
It's about $12,000, round figures.
A question up here? Mr. Randall?
I'd like to know if this hourly rate is... Includes negotiated salaries for union employees' contracts?
No. This is only for non-union employees in the town. This does not affect any of the union employees. And you might notice also that we took out the old thing. It went up to 11 steps or 12 steps. We took out... Those were contract employees, fee-for-service programs like the department heads, the town administrator, and people like that. So, we just clipped those off the top of the thing. We don't use those because they're all individual. This applies only to the non-union town employees.
Thank you. So, in order for the motion under Article 11 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call for a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting to reconvene it on June 12, 2017. Second, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you.